November eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, Bowling Green, Warren County Planning Commission. And Ms. Monica, if you would call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Balance? Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark? Commissioner Drain? Commissioner Gay? Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie? Commissioner Starks? Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. Monica, in our packets, you had the minutes of our October twenty-first meeting. Are there any questions regarding the minutes of that meeting? Hearing none, we'll call for a motion, please.
Second.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. We now enter our public hearing before we get to you, Monica. And so Hamp, would you administer the oath to our...
I suggest that we let Megan Mooney do her first quarter budget report.
Excuse me. That's, that's fine. Thank you. We have our fiscal year twenty twenty-one first, twenty twenty first quarter budget. And Megan Mooney, if you'll present that, please.
Sure. Everyone should have a copy of the September budget statement in their packet. We'll do a quick run-through on the, the budget, just take a look at the first quarter. If everybody notices on the first page, there is a column that says year-to-date percent of budget. This is a really good tracker to see if we are on target for where we, for, for each quarter. So, we should be at roughly twenty-five percent on everything if we're talking about an expense that is spread out or income that is spread out over the entire year kind of evenly. It will show out of whack a little bit if it's something that we receive large payments up front or if we have an expense that we pay a large amount, like insurance, for example. We pay that once a year, so that'll show a little bit off. So, anyway, just to start off with the income, going down, everything is looking fairly in line as it should. We get down to construction fees. We're at a hundred and forty-six percent of what we had budgeted for the year. That's a good thing in income. We're not exactly sure how much more that we'll receive for the remainder of this fiscal year. We had budgeted a hundred thousand and were at a hundred and forty-six, three hundred.
So, Megan, that is, that's not a cash basis thing. That's really that, that much up. Is that correct?
Exactly. We've actually received a hundred and forty-six thousand in construction fees. Total income, we're at thirty-four point one percent, which is about nine percent more than what we would have anticipated to be at for this month or as of this year. So, we're doing well as far as income goes. Jumping down to expenses, we'll go down to personnel and we're at twenty-three point seven percent so far this year, which is exactly where we want to be. And if we flip over to the next page, going, just lumping, office expenses, we're at twenty-one point four percent, so a little bit under budget there, which is good. MPO expenses, we're at one point four percent. Really low there, but we have not spent any of our miscellaneous amounts that Carissa had budgeted, nor have we done any training and travel. Those, I think, will be at the end of, or closer to the end of the year. Contractual services, we're at thirty-five point seven percent. The reason we're a little bit out of whack on that one is if you notice the insurance expense that we have, we've paid all of that at the beginning of this fiscal year, so we will not have that again. So, it will start to level out as we, as we go through. Jumping down to travel, we're at fourteen percent. Planning commission expenses, we're at sixteen percent. And then total expenditures, we're at twenty-four percent. I don't think we can really do any, any better than that. Still hoping to purchase a new truck, but we're waiting on state pricing on that. We have ordered a Lear truck topper to convert one of our existing company trucks to help out with signs and stuff in the meantime. And if we jump to the last page, our checking account balances are listed there. At the end of the, this quarter, we were at five hundred and forty-one thousand. We're actually at about six hundred and sixty-three thousand as of today, and that's got us halfway through this quarter. And then our subdivision cashierly account, we were at one point nine million at the end of that quarter. Right now, today, we're a little over two million dollars. That's all I've got for you guys. Any questions I can answer?
Commissioners, any questions for Megan?
All right. Thank you.
We need a motion to approve our budget report, please. Motion.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ruttow?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you all. Hamp, you ready?
Thank you. Sorry.
That's all right. Thank you for correcting it.
Would you please order that the record include all relevant statutory and regulatory provisions, the commission's entire file for each application, and the qualifications for each of these staff witnesses? And if you would also please administer the oath to them.
Swear to tell truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. You have in your packets your subdivision and site development plans. Are there any questions? Hearing none. And then our letters of credit and performance bonds. At each of your desks, there is a fourth item on a letter of credit from Hardcastle Estates, Phase One, amount of forty-three thousand from H&amp;A Development. Any questions? We approve this submitted. Is there any other old business? Do we need... All right, we'll try this. Do we have a motion to approve our letters?
So moved.
Second.
I'm doing the best I can, Kristen.
I'm sorry, who was the second there? Mary. Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Thank you very much. Is there any other old, there's no other old business for tonight? Our first public hearing of tonight is twenty twenty-one Flume, the estate of Virginia, A. Robertson, care of Jennifer White, has filed an application for a future land use amendment on a portion of a tract of land containing approximately three point seven acres located at ten one one six Louisville Road and ten one one six Louisville Road, Unit B, from agriculture to rural density residential.
Chair Warren?
And this is all twelve members voting.
We had a pre-app on September sixteenth of the property you see outlined in yellow. The property is zoned agriculture. Both properties are zoned agriculture. The existing land use is agriculture and the future land use is agriculture. The applicants, again, are proposing to amend the three point seven acres. There is a typo on the staff report. It's at one zero one six six and one zero one six six, Unit B, Louisville Road, not eighty-nine forty-one Cemetery Road, but rezoning from, or Flume Amendment from agriculture to rural density residential. And if that Flume Amendment is successful, the applicants would like to rezone from ag to re, agriculture to residential estate and rural residential RR in order to create two single-family residential lots. And the proposed density for this development is zero point five four dwelling units per acre. If you'll flip over on to page two of your staff report, you'll see the considerations for the future land use map amendment. I can go through those if you all like, but the applicants did include the following narrative with their Flume Amendment application to address the criteria listed above. The compatibility of this proposal is demonstrated by the fact that proposal does not involve any change in land use and does not involve any physical change in the property. Further additional compatibility protections are made available by development plan conditions, which would be compatibility assurances, which would not be available but for the amendment to the future land use map and zone change. Among the development plan conditions are provisions regarding building, location, height, materials, and access to the public rights of way. Under the site characteristics review, we can go over any of them that you all like, but I will highlight a couple in particular. Under natural features, you'll note that there are several mature trees scattered around the property and there are known sinkholes in the vicinity. And then under, on page three, under cultural or historical features, the existing primary residence located at one zero one six six was constructed in nineteen eleven. Moving down to site design and compatibility review, we'll jump straight down to the surrounding architectural features. The area is mainly comprised of large ag tracts and farm buildings. For the seven homes fronting Louisville Road within half-mile, homes are mostly two stories in height with a couple of one and one-and-a-half story structures also present with those home sizes ranging from around fifteen hundred square feet to nearly six thousand square feet with a median of just shy of four thousand square feet and an average also just shy of four thousand square feet. Under building materials review, those seven homes within the half-mile fronting Louisville Road have exteriors with a mix of brick, stone, and cement board siding with brick or stone foundations. All but one have attached garages with all but one of those being an attached two-car garage. There's no area-specific policy review, so we'll jump down to the development plan conditions. Condition, they're broken out into two separate sets of development plan conditions. The first one for the ag to RR piece, that's two point six nine acres or proposed to be two point six nine acres. The applicants propose the following, that number, development plan condition number one has to do with access being coordinated with KYTC if there's a relocation or modification of the existing access point. Number two deals with the preservation of existing trees. Number three has to do with if, well, it states that in the event that the existing residential structure on the property is replaced, any new residential structure shall consist of at least twenty-five hundred square feet of heated and cooled living space, exclusive carport, garages, and porches, and shall be no taller than two stories in height and shall be oriented to face Louisville Road. Number four, kind of on the back of that, states that for the, if the existing residential structure is replaced, that any new residential structure, the entire foundation, at least seventy percent of each facade, shall consist of at least seventy percent brick, stone, cementitious siding, or LP smart siding, and concrete block shall be prohibited. Number five is that, again, if the existing structure is replaced, the new setback shall be at least fifty feet from the front property line. Flipping over to the next page. Number six has to do if the existing structures are placed, that there will be an evaluation for the current septic system by the Barren River Health Department in order, or they will receive a new permit for a new system. Number seven deals with the preservation and mitigation of sinkholes. And number eight deals with the historical residence on the property and that if it's demolished, the owner will donate salvageable materials to Habitat, Restore, or a similar organization for the reuse of such materials. And there's a separate set of development plan conditions that are basically identical for the one point zero one acres proposed to go to RE. For the interest of brevity, I'm not going to read them all again. I will point out the main differences, or the only differences, that you'll note that development condition, plan condition number eight from the first set, dealing with the historical residence, is not present in the second set, just applying to the RE property. If you'll look at your Focus Twenty Thirty category review, we can go over any of these in, in whatever detail you all like, but I will just note that staff identified eighteen items from the Focus Twenty Thirty Comprehensive Plan, five of which comply and thirteen of which are up to your all's determination. And then we can flip back to page one to the points to consider. The first point to consider, the planning commission should consider if the proposed Flume Amendment meets the criteria outlined in LU one point one point four of the comp plan or if the premature development of the countryside, or if it is premature development of the countryside. And if approved, the proposed zone change would be consistent with the Flume and rural density residential category. Number two, the proposed development complies with the majority of site characteristics review criteria. Three, that the proposed general development plan complies with the majority of the review criteria for site design and meets the minimum requirements of zoning ordinance. And lastly, that the planning commission should determine if the proposal is compatible with the area. And that's all I've got for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Zach. Commissioners, any questions for the first part of this mistakenly? This is the Flume Amendment for this piece of property.
So, Zach, let me see if I understand correctly. The, the applicant doesn't propose any changes, and we'll ask the applicant when they come forward. Secondly, the only reason you're, we're doing this is because they're cutting this off from a larger parcel?
Yeah, they're reconfiguring the parcels that are there.
Got it. All right. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions, commissioners? Thank you, Zach. Is the applicant here and would like to add anything?
Thank you, Chair Warren. Kevin Brooks for the applicant, and we do really not have anything to add. The answer to your question, Mr. Graham, is correct. We're really trying to keep things exactly as they are, but it required a Flume Amendment and a zone change.
So, no demolition of the existing homes is currently anticipated by your client? Correct. All right. Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Is there any opposition to this request in the audience tonight? Hearing none, we call for a, the First Amendment would be the Flume Amendment. And if that is approved, then we would, we would vote on the proposed zoning map amendment.
Make a motion to approve the proposed future land use map amendment, docket number twenty twenty-one Flume. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed Flume Amendment has met the directive to amend the Flume as outlined in LU one point one point four in the Comprehensive Plan. Further, I request this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. The Flume Amendment is approved, we'd call for a motion on the zoning map amendment, please.
Make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and conditioned upon the general development plan, docket number twenty twenty-one sixty-one Z counting. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus Twenty Thirty Comprehensive Plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report.
Second.
Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Unseld?
Yes, ma'am.
Vitale? Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. The motion is approved and will go with the Warren County Fiscal Court. Thank you all. Our next case tonight is Holly Performance Products Incorporated, the applicants, and Southern Land, Southern Kentucky Land LLC. The applicants are proposing to amend the Flume for fifty-five point nine one acres at zero Porter Pike from mixed-use residential to mixed-use commercial. If the Flume Amendment, Amendment is successful, the applicants would like to rezone these same properties from PUD to light industrial in order to develop the property with a mixture of uses, including an engineering center, a light fabrication shop, offices, and a visitor's center. Mr. Jones?
Thank you very much, Chair Warren. We had a pre-app on August twenty-fifth for the property you see here outlined in yellow. The existing zoning is PUD, binding elements. And then you'll see that small sliver of floodplain there at the rear portion of the property. The future land use is mixed-use residential. Oh, and the existing land use is agriculture. Thought I missed one. Again, the applicants are proposing to amend the Flume for fifty-five point nine one acres at zero Porter Pike from mixed-use residential to mixed-use commercial. And if that is successful, to rezone from PUD to LI, light industrial, in order to develop the property with a mix of uses, including engineering center with light fabrication, a light fabrication shop, offices, and a visitor's center. And then if you will flip to page two of your staff report, we've got our considerations for the future land use map. You'll, you'll see the category descriptions for mixed-use residential and mixed-use commercial. And then if you'll look down, or I guess over onto page three, the applicants submitted the following narrative to address the Flume Amendment request that they brought before. They've stated, "The proposed development is largely commercial in nature with a small fabrication shop, minimal to no manufacturing. It's adjacent to I sixty-five and is compatible with the surrounding uses and zones, including the National Corvette Museum and numerous commercial uses along Interstate Drive. Nearby industrial uses include the General Motors Bowling Green Assembly Plant, Berry Global, MHS Global, Frithlum North, and BADA Division Hennessy Industries. The proposed development also sits adjacent across Porter Pike from the twenty-million-dollar NCM Motorsports Park constructed in twenty thirteen. Proposed development plan conditions address capacity of existing infrastructure." Looking down at site characteristics review, I won't go over all of them, but I will point out a few. Natural features, there are clumps of mature trees scattered around the property and the back portion of the site along Barren River is heavily wooded, and there are known sinkholes on the property. And under floodplain and wetland, you'll note that there is a wetland towards the center of the property and a portion of the property that I mentioned a moment ago is located in the floodplain. Under site design and compatibility, surrounding density, residential uses in the vicinity are mainly rural with the exception of the homes in Robert Loving Subdivision located on Clark Circle, and those are low-density in character. Under surrounding architectural features, I'll call out that very few structures exist along the roadway in the stretch of Porter Pike. The existing buildings are agriculture in character with the majority of one-story single-family structures becoming prevalent near Clark Circle, as mentioned. Building materials, the existing ag buildings have wooden exteriors with homes that have exteriors comprised of a mix of brick and vinyl. And under building orientation, the majority of existing structures along Porter Pike have a front facade that faces Porter Pike. The applicants agreed in DPC number four that buildings within two hundred feet of Porter Pike shall be oriented to face Porter Pike, but did not address building orientation or screening of side or rear-facing facades located more than two hundred feet from Porter Pike. Flipping on to the next page, there are no area-specific policy reviews to go over, so we'll look down at the traffic impact study. The section three point one point four of the zoning ordinance outlines the criteria for requiring a traffic impact study. Traffic impact study was not required by KYTC or Bowling Green Public Works for this application in lieu of a commitment from the applicants that right turn lanes be installed on Porter Pike at both entrances into the development, and a maximum of two entrances shall be permitted. The applicants agree to those in DPC number three. Looking down at the development plan conditions, number one regards the preservation and mitigation of sinkholes on the property. Number two deals with utility location and that it shall be underground. Number three, I, I will read that, but that has to do with the traffic impact study that I just mentioned. The property will be served by no more than three access points on Porter Pike, no more than two of which shall be, shall serve the development and the use of property by Holly Inc. All access points shall be developed and constructed in accordance with standards of the KYTC, or Kentucky Transportation Cabinet and Bowling Green Public Works Department. Right turn land shall be added for the two access points on Porter Pike constructed to serve the Holly Inc. development. Number four, building materials for facades of all structures shall be limited to steel, glass, brick, stone, cementitious siding, or similar cement-based materials, or architectural metal panels with concealed fasteners. Facades of all buildings located within two hundred feet of Porter Pike shall have no greater than twenty percent metal or split, split-faced block. Plain-faced blocks shall be prohibited above finished grade. Flipping over to page five has to do with that building location, that building's located within two hundred feet of Porter Pike shall be oriented to face Porter Pike. Number six deals with freestanding signage in that it shall be monument-style with a height no greater than fifteen feet and sign-face area no greater than eighty square feet. Number seven limits the maximum height of structures to three stories. Number eight outlines prohibited uses, the ones that they called out being manufactured in mobile home sales, light aviation, ground transportation services, bingo parlor, tattoo parlor, adult entertainment, packaged liquor sales, or display of pornography or adult books. And number nine deals with the preservation of existing trees. Under the Focus Twenty Thirty category review, staff identified eleven items, five of which comply, and six of which are up to your determination. I can go over any of those you all like, but if not, we'll move back on to page one to go over the points to consider. The planning commission should consider if the argument provided by the applicants to amend the Flume meets the criteria of LU one point one point four. And if the Flume Amendment is approved, the proposal would be consistent with the Flume in the mixed-use commercial category. The proposed development complies with the majority of the site characteristics and review criteria and meets the minimum requirements of zoning ordinance. The proposed development complies with the majority of the review criteria for site design with considerations noting, noted regarding building orientation. And lastly, that compatibility of the proposed development should be determined by the planning commission. And that's all I've got for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Zach. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Jones?
Zach, could you, I can't seem to quite locate where that two hundred feet from Porter Pike is. Clearly, they're well away from the rear of the property where the river is located. Is there anything that give us some proximity to, apparently, they're going to preserve all the trees two hundred feet from Porter Pike? Do I read that correctly?
Yes. Let me flip back to exactly what that says. Stating that all, you're talking about the all existing healthy trees located on the eastern property line of the property, beginning two hundred feet from Porter Pike, et cetera, et cetera. You're talking about that condition. I think you can see on... I think you can see on the exhibit, it's talking about, I don't know where that laser pointer is. Ah, the mouse. Does it show up? Oh, nice. I believe it's talking about the existing healthy trees on this portion of the property for the 200 feet between Porter Pike and then 200 feet back.
Thank you, Zach.
Yep.
Commissioners, any other question for Mr. Jones?
Hearing none, thank you, Zach. Is the applicant here?
We are.
All right. Could you state your name and address, please, sir?
Ted Pardue, 1010 College Street.
Mr. Pardue, do you swear to tell the truth?
I do, sir. It's good to see you all this evening, Ted Pardue, on behalf of the applicants. I can address as much as I need to, in the event you have any questions, but I will just say a few things. Obviously, most of you all are probably familiar with Holly. They've been a presence here in Bowling Green since, I think, the 1950s. They've been headquartered here since, I think, the early 90s. What has brought this application before you essentially is growth. The company is, has its current headquarters out on Russellville Road, and they occupy space in the building with the planning commission, and they're simply at a point where they need to expand, and this is the ideal location for that. You have the concept plan up on the screen. The development is a campus-style development. You have a, an office, corporate headquarters, office use there up by Porter Pike. The office building you see on the concept plan on the far left, which would, I guess, be the west side, that is not part of the initial development plans, that's for future expansion. You have the, I guess, the, sort of the east of the concept plan, nearest Porter Pike, you have a visitor's center, and that's for folks who, automobile enthusiasts, who, available for them to come, view the types of products that Holly makes. There'll probably be a small retail area in there for them to purchase merchandise, and maybe even a small cafe to get snacks and drinks. And then the large building to the rear of the development is more of a research and development-type structure, will be some light fabrication going on in there, no manufacturing as you would, as you would traditionally think of it. One other thing I'll point out is you'll see to the rear of the R&amp;D Center, there's a space that's labeled truck parking. There, primarily, this, the traffic coming in and out of this development will be personal automobiles of the employees of Holly that are going to be coming and going. The truck parking in the rear, Holly has two marketing semis. That's all that that is identified for the purpose of. And those trucks, I think, about once a month, might be coming in and out of the facility, so there aren't any commercial cargo or deliveries coming in and out of the development by, by way of tractor-trailers or large commercial vehicles. With that being said, I, you know, I can, I can go into as much detail as possible. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to take those. I have with me Kevin Johnson, he's this gentleman here. He's a corporate director for Holly Performance. Our engineer, Brian Shirley, is here from Arnold Consulting Engineering. If anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to take those.
Thank you, Ted.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Pardue?
So Ted, does the property slope pretty heavily toward the river in the back?
About.
So is it safe to say that your client has no intent to harvest the timber or anything along the rear portion, along the river portion of this property because of the slope and et cetera?
Correct, Commissioner Graham, and that's a good observation. That, that slope is fairly severe, and it starts about where those trees start. And I was speaking to Mr. Johnson about that earlier, and, you know, they envision maybe even a, like a park or recreational area for the employees back there. I don't think there's any intent whatsoever to harvest any or clear-cut any of those trees.
Good, all right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Any other questions?
Thank you, Ted.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone in the op, in the office, in the office, here tonight, that has an opposition or questions for this proposal? Thank you. We'd call for a motion on the Flume Amendment, and if that is successful, then we will call for a motion on the zoning map amendment change.
Make the motion to approve the proposed Future Land Use Map Amendment, Docket Number 202122 Flume. Based on the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed Flume Amendment has met the criteria to amend the flume as outlined in LU 1 dot 1 dot 4 in the Comprehensive Plan. Further, I request this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second. Commissioner Volkert?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Whiteburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. We call for a motion, please, for the zoning map amendment.
Make the motion to approve the zoning map amendment, together with and conditioned upon the general development doc, plan, Docket Number 202163. Based on the testimony and documents presented, the zoning map is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan, as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted Comprehensive Plan. Further, I request this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second. Commissioner Volkert?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld? Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale? Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. The motion passes, and will be recommended to the Warren County Fiscal Court. Our next item tonight is 202123 Flume in 202164Z County. The applicant is Brian Gross. The applicant is proposing to amend the flume for 3.7-plus acres located on a portion of Zero Stanley Rice Road from low-density residential to moderate-density residential. If the Flume Amendment is successful, the applicant would like to rezone the same area of the property highway business to RM3 townhouse multifamily residential in order to develop the property with a maximum of 48 multifamily residential units. Ms. Rachel?
Thank you, Chair Warren. We had a pre-application conference on September 13 of 2021 for a portion of the property located on Stanley Rice Road. This property, or at least part of this property, should look familiar, because there was an application that encompassed more of the land from this parent tract back in July of 2021, and I'll go over those differences momentarily. The current zoning of the property, as you mentioned, is highway business with a current land use of agriculture. The current future land use designation is low-density residential, and as you mentioned, there's a proposed future land use map amendment to moderate-density residential. I'm actually going to kind of go out of the usual order and jump to page six, and I'm going to go through the majority of the staff review summary, only because I think that kind of highlights the differences between the previous application versus the current application that's before you this evening. So again, the request is to amend the future land use map and rezone the property to develop a maximum of 48 multifamily residential units. The planning commission considered a previous proposal during a previous hearing on July 15th that involved a future land use map amendment to high-density residential and a zone change to RM4. The future land use map amendment was denied by the planning commission, and therefore the zone change to RM4 was not considered. Section 3110 of the zoning ordinance states that the planning commission shall not consider, unless initiated by the planning commission staff, a parcel of land or any portion thereof for official zoning map amendment, including amendment of development plan conditions of a develop, of a development or a future land use map amendment until 12 consecutive months have elapsed from any final action, as defined by Section 313, upon any application for such official zoning map amendment. Reapplications initiated by the planning commission shall be based on a change of circumstance, which was not known at the time of the original application. The applicant believes that the change in the nature of the applications, including the proposed future land use map designation of moderate-density residential, proposed zone of RM3, and reduction in the acreage involved in the rezoning application is a significant enough change for the planning commission to reconsider an application for a portion of the same parcel that was involved in the previous hearing in July. And so we have outlined the main differences in the applications below. Let me jump to the concept plan, just so you have that for reference also. So the original application in July involved 12.6 acres. The application tonight involves 3.7 acres. The previous application proposed a zone of RM4. Tonight, the proposed zone change application is for RM3. The previously proposed density was 18.73 dwelling units per acre. The current proposed density is 12.97 dwelling units per acre. The previous application proposed a maximum number of units of 236. Tonight's application proposes a maximum of 48 units. The previous application allowed a maximum building height, or proposed a maximum building height of three stories. Tonight's application proposes a maximum building height of two stories. The previous application required that all buildings in the development be consistent in design and color scheme. Tonight's application proposes that all buildings in the development will be the same in design, be the same design, and have the same color or similar materials and color scheme as those multifamily buildings on the adjacent property at 192 Vincent Street, which would be, if we're looking at the concept plan, the adjacent property to the west, right The original application proposed 25% open space with a swimming pool, sidewalks, dog park, and leasing office with fitness and recreational space. The application tonight proposes 25% open space with a dog walk area, open recreational area, and gazebo. So those are the, the main differences between the July application and tonight's application. So with that, I will go back, and we will go back to page two, and we will review the moderate-density future land use category description, which is the proposed future land use map change to moderate density. This designation encourages areas developed for higher-density, single-family detached and attached, as well as semi-detached multifamily development, including duplexes and townhouses, apartment buildings, condominiums, and mobile home parks. densities in this land use should range between 3.5 and 13 dwelling units per acre. Then below, you'll find our reference to LU 1.1.4, which outlines the procedures to amend the future land use map. You'll see the text in italics, that was the narrative supplied by the applicant for their future land use map amendment, and it states that, "While designated as low-density residential on the flume, the property is currently zoned highway business with no restrictions on use, building height, materials, et cetera. There is no one predominant zone or use in this area. This is evidenced by the fact that the property is contiguous to properties with a multitude of zoning classifications, including HBLI, GB, RS1A, and Ag. Existing uses contiguous to this property also vary greatly and include multifamily uses to the immediate west of the property, which is the same proposed in this application. With density not to exceed 13 dwelling units per acre, buildings not to exceed two stories, and use of the property designated as residential with amenities, rather than highway business, commercial, with no restrictions, the proposed use is much more compatible with the surrounding area than that which is allowed as the property is currently zoned." So again, that was what the applicants included for their future land use map application. So the planning commission should determine that this is sufficient to address the criteria in LU 1.1.4. Jumping down to the site characteristics review, under layout, lot size, and setbacks, again, looking at the concept plan, the proposed lot and building and parking configuration is shown on the site plan. There are 48 units depicted, with allowance for the same number of units proposed in the development plan conditions. The plan proposes some parking and a dog walk near the adjacent single-family residential uses, with the majority of the proposed buildings located central to the property and closer to Stanley, Stanley Rice Road. Lot sizes and setbacks will adhere to the RM3 standards and the zoning ordinance, including a 25-foot setback, building setback for multifamily development adjacent to the single-family uses to the north. Under transportation infrastructure, the property is fronting on Stanley Rice Road, which is a county-maintained roadway that currently has 16 feet of pavement width. If the proposal is approved, and there's a typo, the road will have to be widened by the developer to 22 to 24 feet, in accordance with the requirements of the Public Works Department. Under natural features, and I'll jump back to the aerial view, so you can see this a little clearer, there is an established buffer line of trees along the majority of the northern property line between the proposed development and adjacent single-family residential uses. This buffer ranges in width from approximately 10 to 40 feet. The applicant agreed to preserve all existing healthy trees within 10 feet of the property line and their development plan conditions. Jumping down to surrounding density, we'll look at the density map. The adjacent multifamily development has a density of approximately 15.29 dwelling units per acre. Other nearby subdivisions have densities of 1.14 dwelling units per acre, 1.45 dwelling units per acre, and 1.52 dwelling units per acre. The majority of the remaining residential uses in the area are agricultural and rural as you get further from the city of Smiths Grove, and the density for the proposed development is 12.97 dwelling units per acre. Looking at the surrounding land uses in the land use map, you'll see that the area is comprised of a mix of agricultural, single-family residential, multifamily residential, industrial, commercial, and public uses. There is also a public institutional use in the area, and several vacant tracks in the vicinity. Looking at building orientation, jump back to the concept plan. Staff has noted that the majority of the existing buildings located, and I will mention, on Vincent Street, the Smiths Grove city limits runs right here, and so Stanley Rice Road, the, the name changes for the road, but it's still essentially the same road. So Vincent Street is within the city limits of Smiths Grove, and then it changes over to Stanley Rice, once you get outside Smiths Grove. But we have noted that the majority of the existing buildings on Vincent Street have a front facade oriented to face Vincent Street, with the exception of the adjacent multifamily residential structures. And the applicant did address screening of side-facing facades in their development plan conditions, with a minimum of 10 evergreens per 100 linear feet, having a minimum height at planting of 5 to 6 feet. Under proposed open space, shown on the concept plan, includes a dog walk area, open recreational area, and gazebo. This is noted in Development Plan Condition 6, and the applicants are also proposing a minimum of 25% open space in Development Plan Condition 5. On page four, we have reference to Section 314 of the zoning ordinance, which outlines the requirements for a traffic impact study. The Warren County Public Works Department did not require a traffic impact study in lieu of a commitment that the applicant widen the road, as I had mentioned earlier, and this is also noted in Development Plan Condition 10. Looking at the development plan conditions, number one addresses sinkholes. Number two looks at those trees along the northern property line and preservation of those trees within 10 feet of the northern property line. Number three, all buildings in the development will be the same design and shall have the same or similar materials and color scheme as those multifamily buildings on the adjacent property at 192 Vincent Street. Split-face block and plain-face block shall be prohibited above finished grade, and vinyl shall be limited to gables, soffits, and trim. Number four requires new utilities, utility lines to be placed underground. Number five sets the maximum lot coverage at 75%. Number six limits the number of units to 48. Number seven looks at lighting. Number eight limits building height to two stories. Number nine addresses screening of side facades, as I just mentioned earlier. And then number 10 addresses the widening of the road, again, to 22 to 24 feet. And that would be to reach the access point to the property, and so that, that would only require that the road be widened to the entrance, shown on the concept plan. Looking at the Focus 2030 category review, we evaluated 19 items from the Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan. Staff found four of those items to be in compliance. There are 15 items for the planning commission to evaluate for compliance, the first of those being LU 1.1.1 and LU 1.1.2, which look at the future land use map. map. Next LU 1.1.3, which looks at compatibility. Next LU two and LU 2.1, which looks at quality of development and character preservation. Next LU 2.1.1, which deals with open space. Next LU 214 PR 1.7 and NCR 1.1.6, which evaluates the preservation of mature vegetation on the property. Jumping down to LU 252, which relates to infill development and whether or not such development is compatible with the surrounding area. Below that LU 2.9, which deals with the character of the Smith's Grove community. On the next page, HM1 and HM1.3, which looks at character and pattern of development and the impact on nearby neighborhoods. And last, HM2.1 and HM4, which looks at the location of the proposed housing type and whether or not that is suitable for the area and if the proposed residences will enhance the array of housing options in the area. And with that, I'm going to jump back to page one, since we already went over pretty much the entire staff review summary. And I will finish with the staff points to consider. The first, the planning commission should consider if the argument provided by the applicant to amend the future land use map meets the criteria outlined in LU 1.1.4. If the future land use map amendment is approved, the proposal would be consistent with the future land use map in moderate density category. Second, the proposed development complies with some of the site characteristics review criteria and some of the review criteria for site design, with items noted regarding road width, tree preservation and open space. And last, the planning commission should determine if the proposed development is compatible with the surrounding area, including the proposed use and density. That is all I have for the staff report, but I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rachel. Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Hurt?
Rachel, I guess the first question I would have, I mean, do we see this as a series of coming back and just doing it little at a time? I mean, I, I mean, from what we saw this summer, and, and I do recognize that we've gone from RM four to RM three and 18 to 13 on the density, but I mean, do you think we're going to do three and a half acre tracks?
Commissioner Volker, that is a great question. I may let the applicants address that here in just a minute. But there's nothing that would prevent them from applying for multiple applications in the future.
I mean, I guess my question was, was that part of the talks when they came and you did your pre-app?
We did, we did discuss that. I don't know that there was ever really a definitive yes or no.
Okay.
But perhaps.
Okay.
I'll let them speak to that.
Okay.
So along that same line of questioning, and you're going to have to help me here. We were asking for some things in this last application. I think one of them was to go to RM three and to reduce the density. And let's, let's say that it unfolds the same way Chris just, Christian just described. This is approximately 25% of the development, and if we take that times, if they do 48 in each track, they're going to have a, a total of 100 and, help me with the math, 100 and, yeah, 190 something. I guess the only downside to that would be we've lost the pool and.
Well, yeah, that would be my, that'd be my, my first thing, if I'd say, wait a minute.
So clearly, I guess this is a conversation for us to have with the applicant. I just didn't know how far that had gone.
I know that we did discuss this during the pre-application meeting, that the commission may have questions as to whether or not this would be the first of multiple phases and if that were to be the case, you know, how that would all tie together and, and work together in the real world, so.
And, and last question is, is this adequate documentation for, for the development plan conditions? If we use this structure across the street as the model for, I guess it's a brick structure. I think at the previous hearing, there was a photo, if I'm not mistaken, of the structure, correct?
Yes, that's correct. And I think that it is because it specifically calls out the location by address and the staff would have that to use to compare with this, if this were to move forward.
All right, thank you.
Rachel, am I understanding it correctly that the road would just be widened to the entrance of the new development?
Yes, ma'am.
And not any farther?
Correct.
Other questions for Ms. Hurt? Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
If the applicant is here and would like to make some comments, please. Mr. Pardeau, you've already been sworn in, so.
Sir, thank you, Chairman Warren. Good evening again. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, who's Brian Gross. Mr. Gross is seated here in the, behind me in the black jacket. I want to say a couple of things, and then I want to jump right into, to Commissioner Volker, Commissioner Graham's questions. Rachel did a tremendous job in the staff report. I appreciate that it did this also, of comparing the two applications, the one from the summer and the one now. We hope that you all, as a commission, appreciate the fact that these are two, in almost every respect, two totally different applications and proposals. When I went back and reviewed the, the record of the hearing in July, the consistent theme that sent, that, that I heard from the commission in support of its denial of the flume amendment was, one, the overall size and scope of the development. At that time, we were talking 12, 13 acres, 236 units. We've brought that down to 3.7 acres and only 48 units. The other, the other theme, and there were a couple of actually proposals by commissioners in this regard, was the density. And we've taken that down from almost 19 in the summer application to 13 dwelling units now. What that has resulted in are two totally different applications or proposals in that in the summer, we sought to amend the future land use map from low density residential to high density residential. We're now seeking to only amend the future land use map from low density residential to moderate density residential. That was a, a, a subject that was of some substantial conversation at the hearing in July. Similarly, in the summer, we applied to amend the zoning map, applied for the zoning map amendment from highway business to RM four. The reason we were going RM four primarily, if you'll recall, is we had some three-story structures proposed in this development in the summer. We have eliminated that, and it is a totally different proposed zoning map amendment in that we're seeking to rezone, if you're inclined to, to approve the flume amendment, seeking to rezone to RM three, not RM four. To the questions from Commissioner Volker, Commissioner Graham, I can tell you today unequivocally, there is no plan to do any more multifamily development on this property. I guess, Mr. Gross, I guess it's possible Mr. Gross may not always own the remainder of the property, or there may not be someone else who, who may come along and want to develop the rest of the property with multifamily. But again, that process requires an application and a public hearing, and you all have discretion in that regard as to, as to what to do. But I can speak on behalf of Mr. Gross this evening. He doesn't plan to develop any more multifamily here. The remainder of the property.
Tad, let me ask you a quick question there. If I remember correctly from July, wasn't there a developer that was here also?
Out of Tennessee?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, is he still involved?
He's not involved.
Not involved, okay.
No, sir. No, sir. This, this is, this is Mr. Gross's development, just like the property next door is his development too. It's, it's, again, we've put it in our development plan conditions, but the buildings themselves will look, if they don't look identical, they're going to look as close as possible to identical as those that are developed right next door.
And the original apartments that are there now?
Yes, ma'am.
Were for sale? Are they still currently for sale?
Are they not? No, ma'am. So, you know, as you all may recall from this, the hearing involving the larger piece of property in the summer, this is a property somewhat of a rarity in that the future land use map designation of low density residential doesn't necessarily correlate or, or correspond to its current zoning classification. It's currently zoned highway business, which is obviously our commercial uses, and there aren't any development plan conditions on the, on, on the property as it currently exists. Couple of things I, I'd like to mention before I close and take any other questions. For purposes of the criteria that you as a commissioner to consider on the flume amendment, I'll point out on page one of the staff report, site characteristic review indicates adequate facilities and infrastructure available to support the proposed development, with an exception noted regarding the road. We addressed the road in our development plan conditions, same, essentially same development plan condition that we had before, that we're going to widen the road to the point at which the property is, is developed. And once that's done, there will be, in all respects, sufficient or adequate facilities and infrastructure to support the development. And that's a component or a criteria that's laid out in the, in the comprehensive plan anytime you have a flume amendment proposal before you. So we satisfied that requirement, we believe, through the development plan conditions. We have addressed issues relating, obviously, to density. In terms of compatibility, and again, I, this was, there was a lot of proof that was put into the record about this in the summer. You can look in conceivably in every direction from this property, and, and each time you turn your head, see a different zoning classification and a different use. You have just across the street from this property, property zoned light industrial and highway business. To the west, you have property zoned general business, but used as multifamily residential similar to this. You obviously have highway business zoned property to the east, and then you have single family to the north. So to say that this proposed development is compatible with surrounding land uses, it's, there is no predominant land use or zoning classification in this specific area. But it is absolutely compatible with the multifamily development that is to the immediate west of this property and is slightly less dense than that multifamily development. Lastly, I would say, again, there is single family zoned and, and use of property to the north. This is, we're proposing this property be rezoned from highway business to RM three. We believe as it is proposed, that the RM three development as being a residential is a less intensive use than the property as it's currently zoned, and will act sort of as a natural transition going from south to north, from the light industrial highway business property to the south, to the single family property to the north. So again, we hope that you appreciate the changes, that this is, again, in, in our view, a totally different proposal, a totally different application, and open for whatever other questions the commissioners may have about, about the proposal. We have our engineer, Mr. Lucas, Tad Lucas is here also, and then of course, Mr. Gross, the applicant, is available for any questions as well.
Tad, I mean, the first thing that, that, you know, I do like the changes that, that y'all have made in your application from July, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate it. I think the thing that worries me is we approved 48 here tonight, and Mr. Gross sells the land, and somebody comes back for another 48, and then another 48. I mean, by the numbers, it could be 163, and all of a sudden, we don't have the pool, the clubhouse, and all of a sudden, have we made, have we made a bad decision on what we're creating there?
Slippery slope.
Yes, sir. And I mean, because like we talked about in July, you know, the things that we did not like in the application, y'all have made a bunch of those changes, going from RM four to RM three, you're taking your density down, you know, but you get to, to 100 and, this land at this numbers, you get 163 units on it, and 163 without any amenities, other than a little dog park, I, I just don't know if it's the, I don't know if it's the right thing for Smith's Grove.
Well, and, and we've thought about that, obviously, and had, I guess, some of those discussions with the staff, but I've had a lot of those discussions with Mr. Gross. And fortunately, there's a process, and fortunately, you all, as the, as the commission, kind of hold the keys to whether or not that scenario is unlocked.
I mean, personally, I would rather see the whole, the whole parcel rezoned to an RM three with some of the things that y'all have done, and some of the amenities are there. I mean, from my standpoint, it makes for a better, a better flow and a better complex or, and almost what we know what Smith's Grove could end up with.
Well, you know, circumstances change, I know Mr. Gross's circumstances have changed. If he, if he, you know, was, I guess, in a position or had a desire to, to develop the, I think it's around 16 acres, you would have seen that application here. I think, again, in the months that have passed, I, I think it's probably likely that, that the remaining portion of that property will either remain as is vacant or be, you know, probably some type of commercial development as it's zoned, would be my guess. I know that Mr. Gross has no intent to, to do any more multifamily residential on the, on the property. But to your original question, Commissioner Volker, I, you know, anybody that, if that scenario were to play out and someone came along and applied to, they would have to apply for a flume amendment, you know, same process and, and a zoning map amendment, you know, they, they're going to have to stand up here and convince you all as commissioners why you ought to do it, knowing you all, what is now part of the record from two, I think, three hearings, public hearings.
I guess this is a question for staff as well. Let's, let's play this out a little bit. Let's say someone, let's say he sells it, and they come back and they, they make this same application. Could we, you know, I, I agree with Christian. If, if this was before us at RM three with the amenities, I would, I would be inclined to like this. So could we, let's clarify two things. One, if someone comes back with this, with this vacant parcel, they've got to go through the same process again, correct? So do we have an opportunity to say to them, you know what, this first parcel has already gotten developed, now you need to add the amenities back in? Or we're going to be inclined to, to not be in favor?
It's always going to be a yes, but. So where, from, from I guess my perspective is, and, and we had this similar on a, on a different case on enterprise court, meeting or two ago, new developer comes in, at what point is that new, different developer's responsibility to build amenities for the other developer who already built their development, if it's a different owner? For example, in, in that case, there was, let's just say, 50 existing apartments or 48. The next guy comes along, completely different owner, completely different developer, meets all of those items, then, you know, then you're going to require that developer to put in amenities for somebody else's development, when you didn't require them to. So the answer is yes, but that, from my experience, is typically being seen as something that this community does not do, doesn't mean we can't start.
Okay, so last question for, Tad, I interrupted you there, sorry.
Well, no, I, you know, I, I think, though, if you're talking about someone who would want to develop the remaining 12 acres in, with, you know, twice the number of dwelling units, that's, I think that's apples and oranges.
So let me ask this, does, does Mr. Gross still own the, the remaining parcel?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gross has no intent of developing the, the remaining parcel, correct? For multifamily?
Family, yes, sir.
Would Mr. Gross be, would Mr. Gross entertain the, the suggestion of restricting the remaining parcel?
That parcel's not up here tonight, so.
Oh, and we can't do that here, right?
So you can't do that.
So you can't do that. It's not, it's, there's nothing you can do about the other nine acres tonight.
A way to get around that? He owns it.
No way to get around it for a purposeful reason.
I got it, okay.
Yeah, tonight, yes, that would need to be a whole new application, that would encumber the entire property and the voluntary development plan conditions that would then apply to the entire property. So, and that could be done a number of ways, but that is not what's before you tonight. What's before you tonight is these forty-eight units on this three-point-seven acres.
Mr. Graham, you're concerned, I just want to make sure I understand, is, is someone else comes along, wants to file the same application for the three-point-seven acres right next to this one? That's, that's.
And, and they come in here, right, possibly rightfully so, and, and there's going to be an eloquent gentleman, somewhat like yourself, who's going to say, you just approved this on the property next door, I want to do exactly the same thing, and what's wrong with my application? You liked his, you don't like mine?
I, I think from, from my, from my standpoint is, and I understand things change, I get that and I understand that, but the fact this is the third time we've seen this application is, I would probably like to see whatever, whatever's going to be done with that other nine acres, I would rather see it all in one application. So if he's going to change any kind of zoning or anything to that other nine acres, it's, I mean, or maybe he's going to leave it highway business.
I think that, I think the plan is, it's highway business.
Go ahead.
So.
I would be inclined even tonight, if there was some way to make sure that that stays highway business.
Can't do it tonight, parcel's not in front of us tonight.
So was that a part of the conversation in, in, in the staff?
During the pre-app, I guess we did anticipate that there would be concerns about what would happen with the remaining acreage. But you're right, that there's really no way to restrict any, any of the uses or zoning for that parcel or the remaining part of the parcel because it's not subject to the, the boundary of the application tonight.
So, so Tad, let me ask, let me just go ahead and ask the question. Would, would you be open to withdrawing, talking to your client, bringing this back, either with a, with a development plan condition on that remaining property, saying that it can't be developed for multifamily? Now we know for sure, we're looking at just this, and if he sells it to someone, they can't develop it for multifamily either. It's just a conversation, it's just a question.
Have to ask, as you can imagine.
Well, I have a question. Even if they came back and, and brought in the, the remaining parcel, currently zoned highway business with a restriction on the highway business portion, that it couldn't be multifamily, with a development plan condition, there's nothing that would prevent someone else from coming back?
Same process.
And applying to amend the development plan condition.
It'd be hard, it'd be hard for Mr. Gross to bring it back.
And, and multifamilies.
But if somebody else bought it, I mean, I mean.
I guess it's not allowed in highway business, so to place a restriction.
Well, the toughest property, is this the same property that they could build a hotel on it right now and they wouldn't even have to do anything?
Story hotel, yeah.
Yep, it is.
Yeah.
Land use wise, that is correct, but they would still have to go through the development review process, which then would kick in the process of the, the highway department looking at it. There's still plenty of, plenty of other items that just wouldn't necessarily come before this board.
I guess I would just say, you know, in, in the event of that scenario, you would have a, an applicant who would be applying to amend the future land use map, who would be applying to amend the zone, amend the zoning map, and you would have to reflect back on to that applicant, all of the concerns that you have articulated that are of record in this hearing and the one before it. And if it is not compatible because, as, as opposed to it being one larger development with buildings in common, with buildings that are similar in construction and materials, with shared amenities, then I would think you, you have every bit of discretion to vote to deny that application on the basis of all of the concerns that you've already said here this evening, and the fact that, you know, it's, instead of it being one development, it's in concept, multiple.
So, so let me, once again, question for staff, is, are we within our bounds, if you will, to, to say to the next applicant, if in fact they come before this commission, and say, the, we've stated on record, the commission has stated on record, what our concerns are with this, with the remainder of this being developed, and even though you're making the same application, the, there's a history with this piece of property?
So each application would be separate and have to stand on its own merits, and the findings of fact you would adopt for that would, would, would need to stand. I guess one thing I'll just caution upon and maybe even take a step out and say I would advise against is doing what you just suggested. And the reason I say that is, it's to start holding the next person accountable for what the previous applicant agreed to, I think is a little beyond the purpose of the individual zoning applications and the framework set out in both KRS one hundreds and our local ordinance. Now, I don't know if there's anything to add to that from, but I'm not the attorney either, so I would.
So Hamp, would you?
Yield that to Hamp.
Yeah, would you comment on that, Hamp?
Yes, sir. I, I, to me, it's important to remember that on the flume amendment, flume amendment compatibility is the question. And you'll decide tonight's flume amendment based on compatibility, and you'll use that same yardstick when the next person, if the next applicant comes along. And so you, you'll consider those applications with the fact that that single family subdivision sits back there in yellow and, and make a decision on compatibility based upon what's behind it. RM three is the proposed use this time, RM four was the proposed use last time, and compatibility, of course, for the four is a greater challenge. So you'll have some differences that will, that, that will be available to you when that next application comes, but rest assured that, that new applicant's going to be pointing to this very tract as a, as an argument in favor of.
As their argument for compatibility.
So you'll have to weigh that in the process. But it's, all these things are not formulaic for you, they're subjective, based on standards, evaluations that you conduct, and I think you have a lot of leeway.
And Mr. Moore makes a great point, and I wanted, I wanted to make sure to emphasize this, compatibility is entirely subjective. Compatibility could be, you know, it doesn't look like what Mr. Gross did, therefore, we don't think it's compatible. Or, you know, we don't think it's compatible because it looks piecemeal.
Sure, but it's tough to argue if they want, if, if somebody buys three-point-seven acres and wants to put forty-eight units.
I don't know.
Probably becomes compatible.
I, I'm a lawyer, I just like to argue.
I understand, I understand.
Maybe we can take it outside.
This one is, is clearly unique. This is a, this is a strange piece of property that, I will say this, from, from, just from my personal perspective, I do like the fact that you, that you brought something, you've brought something back to us that more closely represents what we asked you for when, in, back in the summer. I, I share Christian's concern, and I think the attorneys in the room, I'm going to have to defer to, to what Hamp just said. Clearly, it's going to be tough for me to consider the, the adjacent property without considering the history that I've already, I've already encountered with this property. And so let me just put the skunk on the table and ask the question, Hamp. If I, if someone else comes to, before this commission and says, this, mine is compatible because the one next door is compatible, can I consider what I've already, what I already know about this, the history of this property?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, fair enough. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, Tad.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Pardeau? Good. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that has an opposition to this request? Just, just a minute. Let's see, a show of hands tonight of people that are in opposition to it. All right, thank you very much. Do you all have a spokesperson or any individual? Yes, sir. And we will request that each person has three minutes to make their comments. If you'll state your name and address, please, sir.
Jimmy Cushenberry, four sixty-seven McKinley Road, Smith Grove, Kentucky.
Swear to tell the truth, sir.
Aye, firm.
Thank you.
All right, y'all have already brought up most of the questions that we had about the, the development, about if this is approved, what would keep somebody else from coming back, but Mr. Gross or someone else coming back and doing the same thing and the same thing and the same thing, till you've got virtually the original development. And it looks to me like if you, if you approved this tonight, you would open the door for that to happen, because like's already been said, that they're going to look back at this one and say, well, you approved this one, and why won't you approve mine? Also, the, this proposal is not, development's not compatible with the area too because of the density. The density around this area is one-point-one-four to one-point-five-two. This one is twelve-point-nine-seven. So the only thing that's compatible is the three units that he's already built in the city right next to it. Plus, what's already been mentioned, if you approved it, you're losing all the amenities of the sidewalks, the pool and all of that stuff because none of that's in this thing. Nothing's been said about an HOA, I don't know what his idea was there. And I know he's going to have to do something with it because he, the price of that land was too much to just let it sit there and, and grow soybeans. And so he could change his mind in the future and come back and do the same thing again and again and again. And did I understand right to say that he's still own those three buildings? Okay, I didn't know what had become of that. I know he had them for sale. And I believe, if I'm correct, the first proposal was RM three.
Yes, correct me if I'm wrong, it was RM four, I believe. Correct? It was RM four, correct?
July.
Yeah, it was RM four.
July, but the first one that he withdrew back.
You might be correct.
I don't, I don't.
It was RM three then.
Okay.
Yeah. And so we also concerned about water pressure, we don't have, we have very little water pressure in our area all around there, and also traffic too. But the main thing is opening it up for future development, and we get all of these and there's nothing we can do about it. This is a small town, there's eight-hundred-and-four population in four-hundred-and-ninety-nine acres. This would put a hundred-and-forty-four people in three-point-seven acres, so it's no way compatible with what we have in the way of our living standards there in Smith Grove. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other comments from anybody in the audience? We've talked about traffic, compatibility, the density, the water pressure. Any other comments regarding this proposed development?
Harold Moore, Smith Grove, Kentucky, one-twelve Witherspoon Street.
All right, you swear to tell the truth, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
My concern is, why now, if he was wanting to sell the other three, and now why is he wanting to build, build this, build this right here back again? You know, I don't understand, he had them up for sale, the, the other three, and so now he's took them off the market, but he's, he's wanting to build this, and, you know, it, it ain't making no sense to me if you, you know.
Well, I, I appreciate your, your thought and question, but that's probably not something that we would get involved in.
Well, I mean, it's, it's kind of making me think that something's already planned for the other thirteen or sixteen acres or whatever, because it's like something's already getting developed, you know, too.
Now, that, that would be a question for him and his, and his attorney, I think they.
Am I off base here?
Well, no, no, sir, you're fine to ask that question, you're not off base.
This calls for us to speculate, and, and so what we're trying to do is protect.
All, all we, all we deal with tonight's what's been proposed to us.
Right, right.
And whatever, whatever the applicant's intents are, that's, that's really.
But on the, on the, on the other, there, we now, I guess, I can't remember which meeting it was, you know, it was going to develop, you know, y'all, I believe y'all said something about, you know, you, you're going to develop maybe three here and three here, but then y'all believe somebody said something about, you know, you can't sell three to somebody else, because they was supposed to maintain it, am I correct?
Well, I think originally, I mean, I think all two-hundred-and-some-odd units were on the one parcel, and if they're on the one parcel, then you could not sell off certain buildings, you'd have to sell it off as a parcel.
Who's, who, do this, who maintains all this?
Well, and by the way, they're proposing tonight, he's proposing to take three-point-seven acres and become its own parcel, so yes, I mean, that would be its own parcel if he wanted to sell that off, he could sell it off as that parcel.
No, I mean, I, you know, he's not maintaining it, is what I'm saying, he knows first.
Oh, you're talking about like an HOA?
Yes, I guess.
That, that's not that.
So the previous gentleman brought that up, and, and we had an HOA agreement with the, with, I think on the first one, we, we did not discuss that yet, and we will discuss that with, with the attorney representing Mr. Gross when he, when he.
If all this gets developed, you know, I don't care what it is, if it all gets developed, what are they going to do with the traffic? Are they going to build another road someplace? Because right now where the Speedway is, it's already, you know, almost stupid, you know, and people in Smith Grove, I mean, I've lived there my whole life, and people in Smith Grove, you know, they're, you know, I don't think they realized how bad, you know, they, some people want, want to get a traffic light there, but you know, you can't really put the traffic light, if you know what I'm talking about, you cannot put the traffic light there. And so when you've got all, all these other units in our, in that, you know, how many, we'll just say the forty-eight, whatever, he developed forty-eight, and if they're like me and everybody in my neighborhood, I mean, you know, I got two vehicles, most of my neighbors got two and three, so next thing you know, you're up to another hundred people coming through there, you know, and it's like, I don't understand where the people's going to go.
That is something he's obviously discussed with the Kentucky Transportation, and so, I mean, he has agreed to widen the road, and so.
But he just.
But that's, that's their call, that's not our call.
But, and that's another thing, he just developing in this city of Smith Grove, but this, this is in the county. You know, you got two different, you know, you see what I'm saying, because that's, right there where that line is, that's, he's, he just widened to there, but that's, that's Smith Grove.
That's not, that's not something that we would take into account tonight.
All right. Oh, well, he just kind of threw me off, it's like, why wouldn't you just do the whole road?
Well, thank you, sir, and appreciate your comments, we're not, just, we limited everybody to three minutes, and thank you for your comments.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. So we've talked about traffic, density, water pressure, compatibility, and I think we've covered that. Is there any other comments that anybody would like to make that has not been brought Just name your name, please.
Excuse me, Brenda Schroeder, one thirty.
Excuse me, Brenda Schroeder, 135 Bryce Court.
All right, you swear to tell the truth?
Pardon?
You swear to tell the truth?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
I swear. I don't know if this is allowable or not, but I did want to say that I don't think any of us here are opposed to development. I mean, it's not like we're saying, no, don't come to Smith Grove. We were all excited about the Buc-E's that were coming in. I think what my concern is, and a lot of them, is adding that many permanent residents to Smith Grove. I don't know if the infrastructure could accommodate all of that, and it's gonna change the whole flavor of Smith Grove, but that's probably not, you know, on the agenda, but. Last time in July, there was several comments about, well, you could have a hotel put up there. And I moved in my house about 40 years ago, and not too long after that, there were talk about a hotel was interested in moving there. None of us were opposed to that, because that are transient people. I think what we're concerned is increasing the volume of Smith Grove, which, it's a small town, there's not much area to expand. That's all I've got to say.
All right, thank you, ma'am. So, we've, we've talked about the number of additional residents in Smith Grove, the traffic. Is there anything else that anybody in the audience would like to address we haven't All right. Commissioners, any other questions for the applicants before we call for a vote, please? Okay, hearing none. We have a flume amendment tonight, do either approve or deny the future land use amendment for docket number 20, 21, 23, flume. So, we have a, either a motion to approve it, or a motion to deny it, then with a, with a second either way.
So, I'm gonna make a motion based on the questions that I've asked staff, also the questions that I've asked council regarding the adjacent property. So, I make a motion to approve the proposed future land use map amendment, docket number 20, 21, 23, flume. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed flume amendment has met the directive to amend the flume as outlined in LU 1.1.4 in the comprehensive plan. Further, I request that this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
O'meam.
Commissioner Unseld?
O'meam.
Commissioner Battali?
O'meam.
Commissioner Volker?
O'meam.
Commissioner Blackburn?
O'meam.
Chair Warren?
O'meam.
The motion to approve the future land use amendment has been denied, and we appreciate everybody's time tonight.
If he seconds it and votes against it? I guess we did. And it brings it to the floor.
Many times when we have a no vote, we, I make you turn around and adopt a recommendation. This, however, is final action by the planning commission, it's not a recommendation to a legislative body. And so, for that reason, the request for flume amendment has been denied. And so, you did it right, yeah.
All right, our next item tonight is docket number 20, 21, 24, flume, and 20, 21, 65, ZBG. The applicants are proposing, Thames Valley Properties, and can I just say Mr. Patel? So, I.
Correct.
Pronounce your name correctly. The applicants are proposing to amend the flume for 3.89 acres located on a portion of Zero Thames Valley, Thames Valley Way from mixed-use residential to high-density residential. If the flume amendment is successful, the applicants would like to rezone the same area of property from highway business to RM4 multifamily residential in order to develop the property with a maximum of 80 multifamily residential units.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you very much, Chair Warren. We had a pre-up on May 26 for the property you see outlined in yellow, the existing zoning of a highway business and floodplain, which you can see there at the rear portion of the property, existing land use that is agriculture, and future land use that is mixed-use residential. Again, proposing to amend the flume for the 3.8993 acres located at Zero Thames Valley Way, Thames Valley Way, however you say it, from mixed-use residential to high-density residential, if that flume is successful, to rezone from highway business to RM4 to develop the property with 80 multifamily residential units. And that proposed density with the 80 units over the roughly 3.9 acres is 20.52 dwelling units per acre. Flipping over to the second page, you'll see the considerations for the future land use map amendment, complete with the categories for mixed-use residential and high-density residential. The applicants included the following narrative with their application to address the criteria above, mentioning that the property is bordered on three sides by high-density residential classified parcels. With all currently, with all current multifamily zoning designations, the flume amendment will therefore conform to the surrounding properties, as with the intended use of the multifamily residential, and is therefore compatible. And the planning commission should determine if the provided narrative is sufficient to satisfy the criteria in LU 1.1.4. Looking down at your site characteristics review, I will note that it's got, property as you'll, you'll see has frontage on Veterans Memorial, but there is not proposed connection directly on Veterans Memorial, it's gonna go through Thames Valley or Thames Valley. Under natural features, there are several mature trees located on the property, mainly along the southern and western portions of the site, including the flood area. DPC number eight requires that developer take all reasonable steps to preserve those trees, not located within building envelopes, utility placement parking areas, and areas of vehicular movement. Under floodplains and wetlands, I will again draw reference to the fact that there is a significant piece of the southern portion of the property classified as floodplain. There are no wetlands located on the property. Under site design and compatibility, looking at surrounding density, yeah, we got a density map there, I won't go over each of those, we can highlight any of them you all want, but I will mention that the existing and approved densities for nearby residential developments range from 2.23 dwelling units per acre to 15.34 dwelling units per acre. The density for the proposed development is 20.52, and the planning commission should determine if that proposed density is compatible. Going down to the surrounding architectural features, the majority of the structures in the median area range from one to two stories in height, the immediately adjacent parcels on Thames, or Thames Valley being comprised no more than two-story, eightplexes in the remaining parcel, parcels on that street, a mix of detached single-family homes, townhomes, duplexes, and eightplexes. While zoned RM4, the development north and west of the subject property closer resembles the density and development standards permitted under RM3. Three-story structures are permitted in the Keystone multifamily development, which you'll see on this density map towards the bottom of your picture, and it's currently under construction. The development is roughly a half mile south at the intersection of Veterans Memorial Lane and Thames Valley Way. The planning commission should determine if three-story buildings are appropriate in this location. Under building materials, the majority of structures on Thames Valley utilize vinyl exterior with split-face block. Under landscaping and screening, I will note that the landscaping will adhere to the standards of the zoning ordinance, and that the applicants also committed to screening side or rear-facing facades for structures fronting Thames Valley in DPC number nine. And under pedestrian, bicycle, transit facilities, I will note that there are sidewalks on Thames Valley, greenways serving the property connecting to the park and Veterans Memorial, and GoBG runs within a quarter mile of this property. Flipping over to the next page, there's no area-specific policy review, and then you've got beneath that, the portion of the zoning ordinance referenced to the traffic impact study requirements. I will note that the applicants consulted with KYTC and Bowling Green Public Works. KYTC waived their requirement for a traffic impact study and required no improvements. Bowling Green Public Works waived a traffic impact study in lieu of a commitment from the applicants that they satisfied in DPC number three, which I'll read in a moment. Number one, and jumping down to the general development plan and development plan conditions, number one requires that development shall consist of no more than 80 dwelling units. Number two relates to the management being managed by no more than one entity. Number three is that requirement from Bowling Green Public Works in lieu of the traffic impact study, which reads, the development shall be served by no more than one access point upon Thames Valley Way, which it shall share with that portion of the parcel at Remaining is highway business, that is, I think, part of this parcel, but not part of this rezoning tonight, which you can see in your exhibit here. And modifications to the existing median nose shall be completed in accordance with the specifications of the Bowling Green Public Works Department. Number four limits the structures to not exceeding three stories. Number five deals with the materials, and that all exterior facades shall be constructed of stone, brick, hardy, board, ephes, LP smart siding, or other modern masonry materials. Vinyl shall be used in soffits only, and neither exposed split-face nor exposed plain-face block shall be allowed. Number six deals with utility placement. Number seven deals, or states that the development shall include sidewalks connecting, the development shall include sidewalks connecting to the existing sidewalk on Thames Valley Way, thus connecting the development to the existing greenway trails and local recreational areas, including Preston Miller Park. Number eight deals with the preservation of trees, which I mentioned before, and number nine deals with the screening of side and rear facades fronting Thames Valley Way, and that they shall be buffered by a landscape buffer of no less than 10 feet in width consisting of six evergreen, evergreen trees and three deciduous trees per 100 linear feet. Looking down at the focus 2030 category review, staff identified 18 items, four of which comply, 14 of which are up to the planning commission's determination, and I can go over any of those in greater depth if you all wish. And then, jumping back to page one, we can go back to our points to consider. The planning commission should consider if the argument provided by the applicants to amend the flume meets the criteria outlined in LU 1.1.4, and if that flume amendment is approved, the proposal would then be consistent with the flume and high-density residential category. The proposed development complies with some site, of the site characteristics review criteria, and some of the review criteria for site design with considerations regarding the proposed density, building height, and tree preservation. And the planning commission should determine if the proposed development is compatible, and if it will complement the existing character and pattern of development in the surrounding area. That's all I've got for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Zach. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Jones?
Zach, is there any three-story buildings in the area?
Keystone Commons, I believe, on this density map, is the closest one for sure, and I think it might be the only one.
Is there any other RM4 in the area?
Yeah, so, if we go back to the zoning map, you'll see that there is RM4 adjacent to this property, you know, all of Thames Valley is RM4, but that's where I called out, if you'll go back to, I think it was mentioned under the surrounding architectural features portion, under site design and compatibility, even though it's zoned RM4, most of the style of development resembles more closely to RM3, you know, the eightplex style, and then there's also single-family townhomes, duplexes, and, and those aforementioned eightplexes, so.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Any other questions for Zach? Thank you, Zach. Mr. Patel, oh, you have your spokesperson?
Chair Warren, Chris Davenport for Mr. Patel, 921 College, and I swear to tell the truth.
Thank you, sir.
Chair Warren, members of the commission, good evening. A few points I'll highlight about this application. As Zach told you, we, we included in our application that, from a flume perspective, it is bordered on three sides by high resident, high resident, high-density residential. So, I wanna, did the arrows not work?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay, there we go. Is that the, and that would be, I guess, the rid?
Yeah.
On this map? So, where we're looking is up here. The exception to that would be the public behind it, that's the park, and you'll see a little bit of that, the remainder of this property that Mr. Patel owns, in this area, he is leaving as HB. So, when I, when we looked at one of these exhibits, Jase Caldwell, who is the engineer, regretted to me just a few minutes ago, he said, he wishes he would've switched the coloring. So, I think I saw Mr. Graham maybe a little bit confused earlier, and I think this is what you were looking at. What we're talking about is basically the wrap, so it would be white on this exhibit. What is shown as lavender, my client tends to leave as HB. He's gonna develop that commercial, and then the request is to re-flume around it so as to provide the multifamily around it. So, back to my point about the densities, or the flume, where am I going? Goodness. It's been a long day. So, all that red is the high, is the high-density residential. And I wish I could zoom that in closer, but as we said, basically, the property is completely surrounded by, with the exception of the park in the back, which is public, and that's shown as green here. We are request, if the flume's successful, the project would be to RM4 standards. I would want to point out that, you know, we often see this, this DPC that says, we're gonna, we're gonna strive and make all reasonable steps to maintain trees. And the trees, in this case, exist in the floodplain, and the reason I want to point that out, you can't have building envelopes and floodplanes. So, I would stress the commission to have every confidence that the very thick vegetation along that creek and that floodplain that basically buffers our development from the park, nothing's gonna happen to it. Because even though that language in the DPC has some qualifying language, none of those are gonna apply here, because we're in a floodplain. And another thing I'll point out, that is what's challenging about the property. If you look at the exhibit we have, you can see how extensive the floodplain is. On the density side of things, we are, as Zach told you, there is density in the median area of 12, 15.3. The 15.3 is the Keystone property. I think, Commissioner Volker, you may have asked, I rezoned Keystone, that's been a couple of years, but there are, I recall, a few things about Keystone. One, that development, as I recall, does not have unification of management in it. This development would. There's a DPC that says that. But I did not pull the Keystone DPCs, but from my recollection, there were a pretty substantial number of three-story buildings in that development, 16plexes, 24plexes, so forth and so on. And that's the most recent development before ours. So, that gives you, I think, some idea of the trend. If the flume were successful, and the commission was considering the rezoning request, I think a couple really strong points about this property. Number one is its connectivity to the greenways, connectivity to the park, the public areas, the areas of recreation, and I had actually missed this until I heard Zach say it, but we are apparently a quarter of a mile sidewalk trek from public transportation. That's not something we hear much before this commission, but I would bet dollars to doughnuts we're gonna be talking about it more in the next 10 years. Public transportation, I think we're at the point now where we're on the front end of that, but I think that's gonna have to be a discussion, which kinda bleeds directly in my next point. This commission is always primarily balancing two forces, density and sprawl, and I, I look at those like matter and antimatter. You almost cannot defend one without encouraging the other. You almost cannot defend one without encouraging the other. Not to get too far afield, but I was present last week during the first talk of the comprehensive plan, taking a look at that. And I think those two, if there was anything that I came out of that meeting with, is that, you know, those are two conflicting forces, and everyone has a stance on it, and you all get to be the arbiter of that. And the only reason I say that is, this is, to me, from my viewpoint, a very clear infill request. There's not a whole lot of acreage available that's close to our urban center, that would have public transportation, that would have park access, that would have sidewalks. This is, although it's only three acres, it's not a large project. It is that type of project. So the last thing, I keep saying it's the last thing, but I think this is the last thing. This is brick, no vinyl, vinyl only in soffits, brick-stone foundations, no block foundations. And then we did agree to provide that screening along the side and rear facades along, I think it's Thames Valley, but maybe it's Thames Valley. With that, that's what I would want to stress, and along with, on page eight, your staff report, there were no non-compliant policies. All the policies in that column are the judgment calls for you guys. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those, but those would be the points I would stress.
Any questions for Mr. Davenport? Thank you, Chris, for your last point. Is there any opposition to this request tonight? Hearing none, we will call for a, for the flume amendment, please.
Make a motion to approve the proposed future land use map amendment, docket number 202124-Floom. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed flume amendment has met the directive to amend the flume as outlined in LU 1.1.4 in the comprehensive plan. Further, I request this motion includes a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Mr. Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am.
Call for a motion, please, on the proposed zoning map amendment.
Make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment, together with and conditioned upon the general development plan, docket number 202165ZBG. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning, proposed zone map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan, as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zone map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request that this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Mr. Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion approved, and we'll go to the Warren County Fiscal Court. Our next item tonight is...
Chair Warren, can I interrupt for just a second? That'll be going to the Bowling Green City Commission as a typo on the agenda. Apologize for that. And then I want to, while we have our quorum of our full board, I would like to ask that we go ahead and take care of the quick item of new business, which is to simply approve in our 2022 schedule, as this will be our last full board meeting this year. And we just need to, if you all are...
So moved.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just count them. Leave it. Everybody has it at their desk. Thank you, Ben. Our next...
So we need a vote on that.
We have, would someone give a motion to approve our...
Yeah, we've got a motion in a second.
Second.
Moving quick tonight. Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am.
And we note that the meetings will continue at 5:30. Thank you, Ben. Our next item tonight is 202102-T County, property at 328 Trunk Springs Farm Street. Selco Partnership doing business as Verizon Wireless. The applicant, Robert Eisenberg and Joyce Wiley are the property owners. The applicants have filed an application for approval of a telecommunications tower located at 328 Trunk Springs Road, Trunk Spring Farm Street, excuse me. Proposed height of the tower is 250 feet. Ms. Hurt?
Thank you, Chair Warren. We had a pre-application conference on October the 11th for the property you just described on Trunk Spring Farm Street. I don't know the history of this road name, but it's a doozy. Yes. But as you can see from the aerial view, the yellow box indicates the proposed location of the tower. The current zoning is agriculture with the current use of agriculture, and the future land use designation is also agriculture. This is a zoomed-in version of the aerial view we just saw. You'll see the proposed tower location and compound area. This is a zoomed-in detail of the compound area. And then the tower elevation is included here. As you mentioned, the proposed height is 250 feet. And I'll go back to the site plan, and we'll look at some of that in just a second. On page two, we have our Focus 2030 category review. There were four applicable items. The first two, LU 214 and NCR 1.1.6, which look at preservation of mature vegetation, and the applicants are proposing to locate the tower in an area that's free and clear of any mature vegetation, so the application does comply with those two items. And then the last two, CF9 and CF9.1, the planning commission should determine if the proposed tower will advance telecommunications and wireless infrastructure in Warren County and if it complies with those items. Looking at the site characteristics review, under the layout, lot sizes, and setbacks, according to the zoning ordinance, the tower must be located a thousand feet from a residential district or use. And the tower must also be set back from the property line a minimum of sixty percent of the overall height of the tower, which would make the required setback based on the 250-foot tower height a minimum of 150 feet from the property line. And the tower meets both of those setback requirements from both the property line and the nearest adjacent, or sorry, the nearest residential district or use. Not much else to report on in that section. We'll go to the site design and compatibility review on page three. If we look at the surrounding land uses, you'll see that the majority of the surrounding area is agriculture with, as you get into Oakland, you'll pick up the single-family residential uses, also some public and public institutional uses in the area with some vacant tracks. Looking at section 526E5 of the zoning ordinance, this outlines the specific use standards for telecommunications towers and accessory facilities. I don't really think I need to go through any of these because the application complies with all of the zoning ordinance's requirements, but if you'd like me to go over any of these sections in greater detail, I'd be happy to. But with that, I guess I'll probably just conclude with the staff review summary on page four. Again, the proposed tower is to be located on property off of Trunk Spring Farm Street and complies with the majority of the review criteria for site design, the majority of the review criteria for the site characteristics review, and meets the minimum requirements in the zoning ordinance. And the planning commission should determine if the application complies with the applicable goals, objectives, and action items in the comprehensive plan. That is all I have, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rachel. Any questions for Ms. Hurt?
And my question really for you, I mean, if I remember correctly, with past ones of these, we really don't have the ability not to approve them. Is that a fair statement?
That's correct, believe me, yes.
Oh, great.
There are some...
I mean, but if it meets all the, I mean, we, it really is just a formality of going through the motion. Okay.
That's a fair statement.
Thank you, Mr. Volker. Any other questions for Rachel?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is the applicant here and would like to add anything that wasn't, or add anything and present anything different, sir?
My name is Russell Brown. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Clark Quinn Moses Scott &amp; Gronk, 320 North Meridian Streets, with 1100 in Indianapolis.
Will you tell the truth, sir?
I do.
Thank you.
So I will do my best to not talk myself out of an approval. That's something I learned a long time ago, but I wanted to just add a couple things. First of all, I wanted to thank staff. We do this in both Indiana and Kentucky, and thank you, thank staff for the thoroughness and promptness of their work on this petition. They did a good job of walking through all the details of this. We do believe we comply with all requirements of your ordinance. One additional state statutory requirement that I would add is that Verizon Wireless does, has considered the likely impacts on nearby land uses and values, and concluded that there is not a more suitable solution which can achieve their coverage, capacity objectives for this area of your community. That is a standard that we believe has been met. This is to fill in a gap on this, in this area of the county. The nearest two structures are several miles away, both in the east and west, so this is, does meet that coverage and capacity objective in this area of the county. So with that, I'm happy to answer questions. Otherwise, I would be happy to start my long drive home as quickly as possible.
Commissioners, any questions? Have the applicant?
Thank you, sir. Have a safe drive to Indianapolis. Do we have a motion from commission? Make the motion to approve the proposed telecommunications tower application, docket number 202102TCO. Based on the testimony and documents presented in the public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan, as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request that this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Chairman, I've let you down because I've let us go to motion without asking if there's opposition here tonight.
Excuse me, sir.
So if we could at least record in the record that fact before we...
Is there any opposition to this request? I apologize, counselor. Hearing none, then the motion, thank you.
I have a motion to second it when I interrupted you.
Second.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Be safe driving home. All right, let's see if we can finish this last one up.
Hey, Ben. I don't mess anything up. You only got four votes. But I can't, I mean...
We need five.
Let me ask you this. How about we just go cast abstain?
Abstention won't get the ball across the goal line. We need... The problem is we...
How about I just don't recuse myself?
It'll be up to you.
I'm good.
See if there's any opposition. Our last item tonight is docket 202162ZBG, located zero Cooksey Lane. The applicants are proposing to rezon 9.86 acres located portion of property at Cooksey Lane from highway business to RM4 in order to construct up to 210 additional multifamily residential units in the hub. If this application is approved, the total number of permitted multifamily units in the hub will increase from 820 to 1,030. Ms. Hurt?
Thank you, Chair Warren. We had a pre-application conference on July 28th for the property you just described on Hub Boulevard and Cooksey Lane. The current zoning, as you mentioned, is highway business. The current use is agriculture, and the property is located in the Lovers Lane overlay area with its own special future land use map. And so for this future land use map in the Lovers Lane overlay district, the designation is commercial. We'll touch a little bit on that in just a second. Page two, if you'll turn to that, we'll look at the future land use category, and there's actually not a specific category description like there is for the standard comprehensive plan, future land use designations. And so we'll look at the policy and the policy plan in just a second that relates to the future land use map. So jumping to the site characteristics review, under layout, lot sizes, and setbacks, you can see the proposed layout shown on the concept plan on the screen, and the development will have to comply with the development standards for the Lovers Lane overlay district that are outlined in the zoning ordinance. If we jump down to the surrounding density, under the site design and compatibility review section, current approved densities for nearby residential developments range from 4.17 to 8.98 dwelling units per acre, and then the current approved density for the residential portion of the hub is 16.63 dwelling units per acre. The proposed density is 21.3. Looking at the surrounding land uses, if we go back to the land use map, you'll see that the surrounding area is a mix of agricultural, single-family, multifamily, and commercial. There are also public and public institutional uses, as well as vacant tracks in the vicinity. The Lovers Lane Soccer Complex and the Bowling Green Warren County Regional Airport are also located adjacent to the hub. And then under surrounding architectural features and the building materials review, we have noted that the, any future development of this property would require a review through the design review board and would have to meet all of the requirements of the overlay district and the zoning ordinance. Looking at the area-specific policy review, again, we're looking at the Lovers Lane overlay district. There were four applicable policies. The staff found two of those policies to be in compliance, but there were two that you need to evaluate, and the first being LLC1, which states that all development in the corridors shall conform to the future land use map unless evidence can be presented that the proposed use is in compliance with the policies of the corridor plan and the comprehensive plan. So essentially, what that is saying is that it may not comply with the future land use map, but if you feel that it's in compliance with all of their policies, that that may be okay. And then LLC2, all residential, residential development and redevelopment should be compatible with existing neighboring residential uses as it relates to density, lot size, housing type, style, exterior building materials, and that open space should be provided throughout in between future developments. The planning commission should determine compliance with this policy. And then jumping down to the development plan conditions, number one, all buildings will be constructed of materials in accordance with Article 4, Section F9 of the zoning ordinance. Those are those overlay requirements which essentially require high-quality materials. So that's why there aren't specific materials listed in the development plan conditions. The number of units on the property will be limited to 210. Number three, all utilities will be located underground. Number three, if we jump back to the site plan, says the property will be developed with open space as required by the Lovers Lane overlay district provisions and the landscape provisions of the zoning ordinance to include a pocket park and a barbecue pit. An existing tree line on the south separating the property from the adjoining Lot 1, currently owned by Alfred and Kincaid, will be preserved. Exceptions shall be allowed for final engineering, clearing of underbrush, pruning of existing trees, and/or removal of trees that are unhealthy or unsafe. In the event that there are openings created within the existing line, landscaping will be installed per the Lovers Lane overlay landscape standards. Number four addresses access to the property. It is limited to three, one on Hub Boulevard and one on Cooksey Lane, and the access point from the Hub Boulevard would be shared. There's actually only two access points shown total on the concept plan, but under the condition, they would be allowed up to three to be coordinated with and approved by the Public Works Department. Five, the property will be developed with curb gutter and interior sidewalks to service the dwelling units. In addition, the property will have a pedestrian connection to existing sidewalks on Hub Boulevard and Cooksey Lane. And number six addresses sinkholes. Looking at the Focus 2030 category review, we evaluated 23 items from the comprehensive plan. We found that 15 of those items were in compliance, and then there are eight that the planning commission should evaluate for compliance, the first being LU 1.1.1 and 1.1.2. Again, those deal with the future land use map and the fact that this is commercial in the Lovers Lane overlay district. So if you determine that all other policies are met, then those items would be in compliance. LU 1.1.3, which looks at compatibility. Next, LU 2.1.1, which looks at open space. And then jumping over to page five, LU 28 and 281, again, dealing with the Lovers Lane policy plan. policy plan. And last, HN 2.1 and HN4. The planning commission should determine if the proposed density is suitable for this location, and if the additional residences will enhance the array of housing options available in the area. With that, I will finish on page one with our points to consider. The first of which, looking at the future land use map, again, with the Lovers Lane corridor plan and policies. Number two, the proposed development complies with the majority of the site characteristics review criteria, majority of the review criteria for site design, and meets the minimum requirements in the zoning ordinance. And last, compatibility of the proposed development, including an increased number of multifamily units in the hub, should be determined by the planning commission. That is all I have for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rachel. Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Hurt? Is the applicant here and would like to add anything?
Good evening. The applicant is here, Julie Shado in 908 State Street, and I have nothing to add unless you have questions.
Are you gonna tell the truth?
I do.
Okay.
I have the engineer and a representative of the, of the owner, too.
Thank you, Ms. Shado. Questions for the applicant? Thank you very much. Is there any opposition to this request tonight? Hearing none, we will call for a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment, together with and conditioned upon the general development plan, docket number 202162ZBG. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan, as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is, is in agreement with the adopted Comprehensive Plan. Further, I request this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second. Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale? Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner, so Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion approves, and will be submitted to the Bowling Green City Commission. Last three items tonight, any new business? Mr. Peterson?
No, sir, none, none other than what we just took care of earlier.
Okay, and then we had the Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan update, any-
Sure, I'll just remind everybody that all that information is on our website. If, if you need to catch up, take a look at that. And then the next in-person meeting will be December 14th at 5:30 PM in the Capitol Arts Building. We're just gonna go over data, stats, and trends, past, present, and future, and trying to, gonna try to have a little, a little fun with that, and be a little, a little more interesting than just droning on about statistics. So I think the trends portion of that's usually a pretty good, a pretty good time. The night of the meeting, we'll just kind of have a discussion panel format. We're trying to round up some people to participate in that, and then, of course, we'll post all that video as well. So hope to, hope that you all at least will view that online. Kind of the new term in government is hybrid information format, so that's kind of what we're, what we're heading towards now, and that's why we're videoing everything, putting it online, so people can view it at their leisure, and then if they still want to participate in the discussions, we are doing that as well. So trying to provide as much opportunity as possible.
Thank you very much. And Ben, I just, you did a very good job at Capitol Arts, and did a good job of listening to people, and just want to commend you for that.
I was speaking yesterday to a lawyer in Lexington, who'd been down here to meet with our staff, and he, he said to me, I can't tell you how professional and prepared the staff here was for our meeting. There was always an effort to try to figure out a way to say yes rather than genuflect and say no, and he said, I only wish we had the quality of staff in Fayette County that you all have in Warren County.
Well, good. Thank you.
It only took that guy one trip to figure it out.
Yeah, I like that. Thank you for sharing that hand.
And let me say one other thing. If you wonder why Ben and I are running out of here, we're still trying to learn this new ordinance, and how many people vote on each particular item. This cell tower was within a mile of Oakland, and so all of a sudden, we're trying to figure out what that means, and who needs to vote, and do we have a quorum, and all that kind of stuff. So I apologize to you, but all is well.
Stand adjourned, and we will see everybody in December.